Good evening, everyone. Tonight, Thursday, February 3rd, 2022. Our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. I call our meeting to order and I ask that we please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Does anyone have any additions or changes to the agenda that they want to bring up to the board to act on? Okay, hearing none. Our public comment. Andy, do we have anyone for public comment?
I'll give them a minute. I didn't notice anybody, but that doesn't mean somebody's not there. If they want to comment, they can type it into the chat box or raise their hand, but I didn't see anybody.
Okay, moving on. Our good to know. Andy?
Yes, Mr. Larson, I don't have anybody for good to know for this meeting. That originally was set up that some of the selectmen, we're going to try to get some people involved, but I mean, I can take that over if you want me to. I have agents.
Yeah, no, I mean, I have a few businesses that are new here in town. And I can't think, of course, of the names because I forgot where I put my brain. But one of them is the place right there in the old Tumi residence, who is new to town. We have new owners for Hebron Pizza, which used to be the Angie's. You know, so we have some new businesses in town that might be nice to get, you know, some of these people on to just kind of say who they are, what they're about. So we'll start getting back into that frame of thought.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Town manager's report.
Okay, moving right along. So we're into the budget mode. So it's going to be hard to meet with me. A lot of times we're behind closed doors. So we're with the budget. We're going through the department head budgets, which have all been submitted to the town manager's office. So we're methodically going through them. Going to be a good push on that next week. We also, I finalized the Chatham Health District's budget through the Finance Committee. That'll be going to public hearing later this month. So we got our numbers. That looks like that's going down a little bit due to Hebrews per capita, which is good news. We had a good meeting with the school, the elementary schools regarding the prep program. We met with the superintendent and the chairman of the board and a couple of other members, along with the superintendent and prep and the chairman from Parks and Rec. So I think we're gaining some positive cooperation there as far as that program goes. We've been working with the building committee, mostly on the school roof projects. And some new updates will be coming later in this agenda regarding the public works facility, which is also they're working on. And as you just stated earlier, Dan, I've been working with the fire department and we're going to try to move that forward, not only with the corporation, but that's lumped into having some plans on putting some staffing at the fire station on the weekends. So we're working with the chief to put something together for more coverage. We had a very productive meeting with the Simon River Watershed. Brian O'Connell joined me on that. They're looking to put a five-year vision together, strategic plan of what the towns that are involved want to see them working towards, what goals and educational projects. So that was a good meeting. Then as stated earlier, the snowstorm was a very long storm. I know there was some discussion regarding that. The Public Works crews went in Friday night, approximately nine or 10 o'clock. They worked through the night and then through Saturday till about eight or nine o'clock, straight through 24-plus hours. So we had to break them due to regulations and safety. So they went home Sunday night. I'm sorry, you went home Saturday night. They came back in on Sunday. So unfortunately, with the temperatures that we had and the blowing in town, a lot of the roads were covered over with snow again and got snow-packed. And it was hard to get them down to the bare surface. We did put a lot of product down there. And it was very, very cold and salt only works to a certain temperature. So it was a stubborn storm, but the guys, I can assure everyone, were out there. They were doing the best they could and they're going to continue to do that. Myself and the town planner are working with a possible prospect for the Brownsfield at 105, or if I'm sorry, 501 Church Street, along with the state. We think we have somebody involved. It's called Airline Cycles. He presently has a shop and he's Tempton and in Colchester. He's designing a workshop, bike shop upstairs with a pavilion and then a business downstairs for snacks, stop for lunches, trying to work with the state possibly put in some bathroom facilities on that property. So we're excited. We're working with them. We have another meeting with the state next week. And we're trying to move that forward. So that's good news. That property has sat idle for a long time. And I believe that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Any questions from anyone? Okay, hearing none. Moving on. Our old business. We have the Public Works Facility Building Project. And again, Andy?
Okay. I'm sure I got the right one here. I do. All right. Thank you. We've asked to put this or leave this on the agenda as Ben asterisk, but I feel it's appropriate to bring this up again tonight and get the Board of Selectmen's support. So what I have as an update is a letter from our town engineer, Tom Fenton. So it says, "Hi, Andy. Below is a summary of our current status, the ongoing pre-design studies, as summarized in our meeting yesterday. Let me know if you need this, a more formal format, or if you would like me to drop off full-size prints or any of the plans. Pat, Terry, please weigh in if you have any additional comments." So I asked Tom, we had a meeting, Pat being the town planner, Terry Hahn was the landscape architect with the conceptual plan, and then myself. So if you remember, there was three things we needed to do. So it's pre-design phase, the tasks. One was confirm previous flagged wetland boundaries. Second thing we needed to do was an archaeological study required based on a SHIP-O referral. And third was reemploy Terry Hahn, the landscape architect, to consider alternative locations on the site for the public works facility. So the status is soil scientist Rich Snarsky was asked to visit the site and confirm or modify as needed the previously flagged wetlands. Now, what wetlands are when they're flagged, that delineates a wetland. It doesn't mean it's all wet and soaking wet. A lot of people are confused about that. It just delineates what is a wetland. Rich generally confirmed the previous flagging with two exceptions. He identified a small, isolated wetland area in the first field from Keeney Road immediately to the east of the proposed access drive. He also noted there is an existing culvert for a farm road to one of the back fields that required a break in the wetland corridor. Secondly, Sarah Holmes was authorized to conduct a Phase 1 archaeological study of the site based on the SHIP-O recommendations. We met with Sarah at the site to review the scope of the project and locations of proposed improvements based on the conceptual plans. As part of the survey, Sarah will also be meeting with state archaeologists and will also be contacting John Barron about his research. Due to the weather conditions and frozen ground, her ability to do site testing is currently limited, but we'll resume as soon as she can get a shovel in the ground. Thirdly, the landscape architect Terry Hahn prepared three alternative concept plans with alternate locations of the public works facility. One of the alternatives has direct access from Keeney Road. The other two had access from a proposed access drive, but were both located closer to Keeney Road than the current plan. Due to the site constraints, including wetlands, site grades, and the need for stormwater treatment facilities, none of the three alternatives provided the site area needed for the public work facility based on prior studies as needs analyzed. Additionally, all the alternatives required additional grading, cut and fills to each support the plan or to provide access to the rest of the property to the north. Terry also provided a cross-section of the site showing the existing plan and three alternatives, which demonstrated the grading impacts. Based on the findings of the additional wetland areas and at the request of the archaeologist, that the access road between the proposed site and existing Johnny Horton Boulevard be located in state. It was necessary that the surveyor maps and the new flagged wetlands is staked out of the road. This required establishing a survey control, fieldwork and mapping. While this was not anticipated in the pre-design phase, it was necessary and would have been needed at some point in the design phase. So the critical path at this point seems to be the completion of the archaeological study. Once that is completed, the concept plan can be revised based on necessity, based on any relative findings. In addition, minor modifications will be needed to shift the access drive to avoid the newly identified wetlands and to minimally shift the easternly portion of the pavement pad, I'm sorry, pavement pad and storage building on the current layout to be out of the 50-foot conservation easement. So for me to summarize, there was some requests from people in town that asked us, why couldn't we just move this project closer to Keeney Road and not use up what they felt was viable economic development land where it's being proposed now? So we had Terry look into doing that and she's come up with some plans and bullet points. And once we get the meeting together with the building committee, we felt it was appropriate to wait for the archaeological study to be done and then we'll bring that forward to both the Board of Selectmen, the taxpayers, and let you guys take a look at that. Because right now, if that archaeological study comes back and they find something and we have to move the building again, it would just be a waste of time. So we want to have all three of these things done, but we also want to show that we did listen and look into alternatives. And we have a couple more that we can be looked at. So we're still working on that, but we wanted to give you guys an update of where we are. So hopefully, if the weather starts to get better, she can get out there and do her work, get that finalized, and we'll be able to come back to the Board of Selectmen with a report.
Okay, anybody have any questions or comments? I do. I think it's imperative that we have answers to all these questions so that we can make a sound, logical decision, which is something we've been stating right along. Those that are saying, oh, we've already made up all of our minds, blah, blah, blah. I don't think that's the case, but the thing is, we need these answers. And also whether there is any other impacts, because it has been brought up on possible endangered species, which I believe DEP has already said there were none. But I think to be fully transparent, all of these answers need to be garnered. And then we can do a fact-based, a fact-based report to the townspeople of Hebron so that they can then make a logical, sound decision based on fact and not endowendo. So thank you. Thank you.
Peter's got his hand up.
Yeah, Peter, please.
Thank you. You mentioned it in your page, Andy, where you cited the topic. Because I think it's critical that we determine how best to communicate this in a very simple format, not in the, frankly, nothing against the River East, but I don't want to go back and forth in the newspaper with, you know, people that are drawing from things that aren't necessarily factual. So can we put the information somewhere central on the town website, public building work update, so people can then look at the facts? And then if they do have opinions and they want to come forward and meet with the board and all that, or you know, public comment, they'll be drawing from some facts and information. And so we put it out early. We update it often. Because if we decide, you know, it gets close and we inundate people with this big, long, complex summary, we're going to lose, we're going to lose people. They're not necessarily going to understand it or take the time to really digest it. So I just, I'm interested in the public relations piece, as Andy mentioned, in terms of, let's get it out and can we get it out in a simplified, bolded format? How we're responding? We're listening. We're concerned about all these areas. We're following up, as Andy mentioned. So how do we do that in a way that's consistent? And people can get used to, let's go to the town website, look at, hit the link for the building update, the works update, see the, maybe a quick executive summary on what's going on. And then now they can become informed. And so I just, how do we do that? I just, I don't want to go back and forth in the River East as an example. I want to have, be able to draw everybody to one central point that we can provide that information. So how do we do that? And I'm just thinking, that's a question, I guess, for Andy. Where would we put it? Town website? I mean, how would you suggest we do that? And it would require someone, I guess, like, require you to do it in a way like, how do we do it in a very simple way to even get a quick read? And then they can obviously contact the town if they want more details.
Thank you, Peter. So we've got a couple of things in the works. And it was the second part of this agenda item on Selectmen, which is discuss how to proceed with public relations. So one of the things the building committee has done is they've supplied us with facts to some of the misinformation that was put in the River East. I've talked to the editor and the reporter, and they're willing to do another story just based on the facts. We're not looking to get into a back and forth with anybody. People are entitled to their own opinions, but there's a lot of misinformation that's being reported. So from the desk of the town manager or possibly from the Board of Selectmen, you could preview the comments that are written. They're not person-based. They're just factual information that we have on the project. There's one aspect we're looking to do, start putting a letter a week in there, because that's a big audience that we need to capture. Secondly, we're looking to possibly get a PR person on board to start promoting this. And then thirdly, what you just suggested, we are starting to have a site that the building community is going to have, where people can go and look at the information and interact and get the answer. So Donna, I think, is putting that together now. I know she's been working with Mel on that. He sent it to us. She's working on it. So that should be pretty closely getting ready to go, right, Donna? Can you chime in on that?
Sure. We are working on a new section for the website that'll have information. There is currently already a section on the website that has some of the information that was presented a few months ago, the PowerPoint presentation, the little video clip. So there is some factual information up there right now. We're working on a new section to refine that information and then provide a means for communication if people are looking for answers to specific questions.
Donna, I have, and this is Peter again, I haven't looked at it on the site. So my concern is that we have also an element that provides an essence, almost like an executive summary. Because I worry sometimes at the depth of information the building committee provides, which is wonderful, but I remember reading one of those studies and it was ominous. And so not everybody can or will take the time to read a lot of the detail. So are we doing it in a way that they can see a couple of quick paragraphs? This is what's going on and they can then have the option to dig deeper, or is it just?
You're correct. You're correct. The section that's up there right now is hundreds of pages and it takes forever to go through. The, what the building committee's working on right now is kind of a summary of all the information that is available and more like an index format. So if you want to read a certain item, you can just click on it and go right to that. But I will make the recommendation that we add an executive summary to that and we can work on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can add something, Dan?
Sure, go ahead, Mel.
That is in progress and there will also be a section with what current activities are going on. For instance, the things that Andy just spoke about with, you know, quick, like, one paragraph that Terry Hahn's made, put together three alternatives and that we're waiting for the thought to come to so that the archaeological study can be completed, things like that. But, and we will have a general general statement, you know, less than a page of where the project's come from, where it's, where it is now, and the perspective of where it's going to. Thank you.
Dan, I have a question and a comment.
Yes, Mark, please.
Andy, I'm going to ask the question first and then make the comment. Do you have any idea when all the engineering studies and all the requirements that you need to take care of will be done? And secondly, it seems that a discussion of all these things is premature until we complete all the things that are required to complete and we have the information before us, before we comment or before we engage in a dialogue with the public or anybody, because then we're just talking about speculation and opinions. We're not engineers. We're not soil scientists. We're not historic interpreters. We need to have the facts. So maybe we're getting a little too fast into this and we should have everything in front of us. So do you have an idea when you'd be able to complete your work and how much time you need, Andy?
Yeah, so as I just previously stated, once the archaeology study is done, that's the final piece out of the three things we're waiting so we can finalize the design, the cost estimates, and exactly where it's going to go on the property. I agree with you, it would be premature to do anything until we have all the information. Because if they come up with something and said, hey, that is a very historic site. You're going to have to move this. No sense doing any, paying for any kind of work to be done if that's in fact the case. So hopefully, when the weather breaks, the other two parts of this are done. The wetlands were marked out. We didn't find anything that was going to change. It's outside of the road. What it did do is it did show us that we can't move it closer to Keeney Road. That was one issue along with a couple others. So we're going to dispel that. But what Mel's talking about and what we're talking about is there's so much misinformation being published. We want to do just some facts to set the record straight, kind of say. You know, at one, I've had several conversations with the reporter and the editor regarding the newspaper in one week, and we all know this, at the time it was done, it was a $10 million project completed at the time if we were to build it. And the next week, there was a letter stating it was a $25 million project. The third week, it turned into a $50 million project. So, you know, we don't have any numbers or any estimates of that kind of thing. I mean, if you want to pick numbers out of the sky to get people alerted, then you can do that without, you know, people entitled to their opinion. Like I said, we just want to supply the facts with this new page. We're going to be submitting some letters with the actual facts about the project to dispel some of these things that aren't quite as accurate as they should be.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, Tiffany.
I just wanted to add one quick note because it's communications is what I do for a living. I think creating this website is critical. I think it's good to have a landing page that's dedicated to this topic. But I would just want to make sure, Andy, that you and your team drive traffic to that website through social media and through these letters by providing direct links to get there. I think it's great to have it there, but I want to make sure that we're directing people to go there as frequently as we can.
Absolutely. Good point.
Dan Larson, go ahead, Peter.
Go ahead. You go, Dan.
I was going to say, the other thing I would ask is that maybe we do just some brief bullet points as to what some of the parameters of this type of a building would need. Now, size, you know, some of the other infrastructure needs that, you know, one of the things that the site only has in town, you know, the power requirements, it has the sewage ability, it has the water ability. You know, one of our things lacking down on Old Colchester Road, A is power. It's only single-phase type services down there. You cannot get three-phase, which most commercial buildings relish to have that extra power. The sewers, as it is now, we have to use pumping to drain all the holding tanks for any kind of washwater runoff and all of that. That all has to be captured and recycled or taken to a third place or whatever. You know more about that than I do. They just can't be drained on the ground, whereas the sewers would take care of that. I mean, so this site has got many pluses that many of the other areas in town don't. So again, I don't know if it would be good to have just some quick bullet points on some of those as well.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Yes, Peter?
General, Peter, and I asked maybe Tiffany to react to my question as well, since her expertise is communication. But one of the things I worry about a little bit with sort of even getting into some articles, information in the River East is you're really, in effect, responding to two or three people that, you know, have the right to their opinions. They put out emotional and passionate articles that aren't always factual. And that's fine. That's sort of a lot of what you see in editorials is just people's opinions on things and a passionate response. And I wondered, Tiffany, your comment about how we drive traffic to the right place? Are we better off not even really engaging? Because once we put that article out, Andy, you're going to, the next day or next week, we're going to see the two or three editorials that will say, yeah, but that's not, and remember that, meaning man. And you'll get into all that, as opposed to how do we just sort of say, we want to get the right information out, drive traffic to the right place, the right place? And to anybody out there, if you, you know, soon get known, if you want to know more about this project, just go here. And all the information is out there. I just worry a little bit about prematurely responding in River East to, in effect, a couple of editorials, when in fact, should we be focusing our energies on directing traffic to where we want to direct traffic? And so that, Tiffany, I don't know if that makes sense or how you think about that. But I worry a little bit about the engagement to what amounts to be two or three people's passionate editorials as opposed to sort of controlling the message the way we want to control the message.
May I answer, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Yes, I agree. I think, you know, you can't control editorials. You can't control. I was, I was an editor and so, you know, I appreciate where the River East is coming from. I mean, it's with letters to the editor, it's pretty, you know, they can't, you can't really fact-check. I mean, it's a letter to the editor and people are free to express themselves. You know, it does seem to be the same individuals that are reacting to this project. I do think it's important to do some type of counter-messaging. But perhaps what that looks like is more focused on what we can do on the town site, what we can do on our own social media, rather than making it seem like we're directly responding to three people. So I think there's value in counter-messaging if we do it the right way.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all. Great discussion. Okay, anything else on this topic? Okay, hearing none. Our next item is our proposed budget schedule. I'll read the motion, then we'll open it up for discussion. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen, approve the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget. Move the Hebron Board of Selectment, approve the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget review schedule as presented, uh, or amended. Should be a pretty quick question, um, opening it up for discussion. Does anybody have any issues with the dates as posted? I know there may be one that I will not be able to attend, cause I gotta do my electrical, uh, continuing ed. And I'm not sure what night, uh, there's only a few nights that it's, it's accessible for me to get in to do that, but, um, don't let that please stop anybody from, from canceling out a date. Has everybody had a chance to look at these and see if they work within their scheduling? Okay. Not hearing any, uh, discussion on it. Uh, I've made the motion. Uh, all in favors, please signify by saying aye. Tiffany, you have your microphone on, so go ahead.
Uh, Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Okay, Mark was next.
Oh, Mark Rivera, aye.
Okay, and I didn't see who was next, Peter or Gail. So, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, thank you. And I'll put that on my wall, somewheres on my messy, messy desk. Okay. Our next thing is the, uh, CIP Budget and American Rescue Plan, uh, for the state and local recovery funds. And Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So keep in mind, this is a draft in draft form, but, uh, following, uh, charter and regulations, the capital improvement plan, which is attached, prescribed to the Board of Selectment Review, the Town Manager's CIP Budget, recommended by Friday, February 15th, and finalize the CIP Budget and Five-Year Plan by March 1st. For inclusion in the upcoming fiscal year budget, attached is the proposed CIP Five-Year Plan and a Recommendation for Funding Sources and a Proposal for the Fiscal Year 2022, 2023 CIP Budget. So this year is unique as the American Rescue Plan State and Local Recovery Funds, SLF RF, provides the opportunity for the Town of Hebron to fund many projects which SLF RF funds rather than regular CIP budget funds. So the attached is a list developed for discussion purposes. The Town Manager has identified items that qualify for SLF RF funding, which would allow these items to be removed from the CIP. The Town Manager is requesting input for other projects slash items from the Board of Selectment, Hebron Board of Education and the Hebron Community. Town staff are working with the Town Attorney and the Auditors and CCM to determine the best method to use for approval of the appropriate accounting for the SLF RF projects and funds. This item will be continued on the agenda for further discussion and approval at the February 17th, 2022 meeting. So as you can see, this is all in draft form, so I'll just give a quick overview of what I've done. Um, so the final rule is, is it, a lot of other towns have put their list together, they published them in the paper and they're moving forward where what I did was I waited to talk to the Town Attorneys, CCM, other Town Managers, um, and gotten their communications to make sure what we're proposing, if the Board of Selectment and the townspeople feel these items are appropriate. One of the things that I did was I really didn't wander too far from the Capital Improvement Plan requests. That's pretty much what you'll see from my recommendations on how to offset these projects. So quite frankly, to put it in layman's terms, we got about three, $3 million worth of requests from the Department Heads for CIP. And historically, around 900 to a million dollars is what we've been passing at referendum. So between cutting and moving some things, we reduced it by a million. Hopefully with using some of these, uh, rescue funds, if approved by the townspeople Board of Select and Board of Finance, we can cut another million and come in at, uh, a number that's been historically approved at budget or at referendum. Donna has up there. Let me catch up to her. That page is in your packet. So the State and Local Recovery Funds, American Rescue Plan and Proposed Projects. This is a draft. This is the first time you're seeing it. Um, it coincided with putting the CIP together. None of this is carved in stone, but we had to start somewheres. So for conversational purchase, uh, I'm sorry, conversation, uh, purposes, they're looking for a new SERV vehicle. So we got prices for a new SERV vehicle, which is an old ambulance. And because of the difficulty in trying to get ambulances, old ambulances are worth a lot more than they would normally be. So we hit the ball out of the park buying that one from Basra at about 35,000. A, a new used ambulance or a used ambulance new to Hebron is about 115,000. So, uh, we don't need a brand-new ambulance at the Fire Department EMS. We're still five or six years out, but it might make sense for us to buy another ambulance now with the rescue funds, which is approved, uh, purchase. Buy one that fits back in Station 1, so we can have two ambulances where they belong in the center of town, and give that used one we bought from Basra to SERV. SERV's been very active through this pandemic. They've used that truck quite a bit. Uh, they continue to use it and we, in the, in the future, we plan and can see that it's gonna be in need. So that's why you see that on there. I'm just gonna go quickly on some of these things, cause it's the first time anybody's seeing them. Uh, Pendleton Drive, uh, Library Pedestrian Bridge, that is something we feel could be funded. I think pretty much everybody knows what that project is. I know Dan does. Um, that's to connect the parking lot from the library over to Patty Dunn's or the Pendleton Drive, uh, AHM. Um, that's been, um, proposed and hopefully that can get funded. The skate park was vandalized. Mark knows this. Uh, the kids have been skating over at Ram. I've got calls from both the superintendent and the business manager wanting to know when we're gonna fix that. So we got a proposal from the Parks and Rec Commission to not only fix the skateboard park, but at the same time, they wanna put in a pickleball court, which is very up and coming and has a lot of people's interest. So that's why you see that there. The playscape is in need of, uh, being replaced at Veterans. That's, that's heavily used and that's an old one, so this would be a good time. That would fit the venue of these monies. So that's at 150 for a playscape for veterans. Uh, this is a placeholder right now. I'm not sure if we can do this, but there's also other monies coming down the pipe for uh, Old Colchester Road Bridge Match at 544-700. That's the 80-20 match for that Old Colchester Road Bridge. The town would have to put that portion up, but there might be, that was always gonna be funded from another source, but if it fits here and it's something that we can do, then fine. If you wanna take that out, there's another possible pot of money that just came up and we're requiring through, uh, another grant opportunity if we could use that for the towns match. Uh, Gillan Hill School's looking for a playscape, so, uh, we put that in there to show that we're good neighbors and we agree with them that for different age kids, they got prep up there. Um, they need two different playscapes, uh, so that's in there. And you can see the subtotal just for those right there is 1,417,216. Next items would be capital projects, that's $10,000 to 74,999. So we got just under $3 million grant to redo Martin Road, if you remember. Um, so the towns match, we have to do the engineering for that. That's about $25,000. We could take that out of here if that was the wishes of the Board of Select and Board of Finance. They're looking for a new p- police vehicle. Um, we have more police officers now, so we're gonna need another vehicle. Uh, so that's listed there. That could be bought out of these monies. The Hammer Softball Field, they're trying to raise money, uh, to make renovations to a town-owned facility, so they've raised between 10 and 12,000 dollars. Um, they're looking for some help, so I think that will be appropriate to use some of this money, uh, to try to move forward and get that project wrapped up. And then the Fire Department, uh, we bought a boat, a used boat from, I think it was Columbia, but, uh, it's a, um, like a pontoon boat, not a pontoon boat, but like a rubber raft-type boat and it's leaking. So they're, they're looking for a, a new boat for both either ice rescue or to go out on the ponds. So we, we put that in there, hoping that would, um, come out of these monies. And then, uh, there's another subtotal of 130,975. Other things that could be considered, um, we're still working with the companies on the design of these projects, but it would be the AHM HVAC system upgrade, uh, that hopefully be a tri-town split. Uh, we don't have a number for that. And then, um, we could possibly use some of these monies for the Park and Rec Program revenue loss that they lost during this pandemic. And another one is, um, AHM revenue loss. So there's a, there's a, there's a few things out that these are suggestions. It doesn't have to be finalized, but I, I wanna get it out there so people are thinking about it. Uh, as you can see, most of the things that I brought up are well-known or in a capital improvement plan. There's, there's no pet projects from, from me or, or anybody else at this point in time. So we had to start somewhere. You can see Donna was very careful to put that draft sideways on that to make sure you guys know nothing like this is finalized. Not sure if you have any questions at this point in time.
Do we have, on, on some of the, uh, projects, do we actually have actual hard numbers of what the costs are like for the boat and the softball field, some of that stuff? Do we actually have hard costs?
Yeah.
That we know what we need to try to get to?
Yup, the pickleball, the skate park, the boat, uh, the vehicles, those are all, uh, estimates that were obtained.
Okay.
Yup.
Thank you.
And then maybe Donna, if you could go to the, the front page of the CIP Budget Revenue Town Managers Propose March 1st. The one that lists, uh, the balance from the previous appropriations there. So that's what it would look like, um, the CIP Budget Revenue Town Managers, uh, moving forward. You see, you can see what was approved in 2021, 2022. It's balanced from previous projects and then to the, uh, right, you'll see the 22, 23. You'll see the low-set funding, funding from other sources, the Public Safety Fund, 11 for Debt Management Fund Contribution, that's to be determined, but that's at 550,000. Uh, the Federal COVID American Rescue Plan is at 1,417,216. If we're the Board of Select and were to consider to do that, then we have a thousand dollars worth of interest. And then the general fund contribution would be that 900,047 dollars for a total revenue of 2,954,304. So, um, listed to the left on the bottom are some completed projects. Uh, Wall Street Sidewalk, uh, which is not completed, but there's, uh, some money board of it. Pickle truck was sold. Uh, and then a Fire March figure was sold. So the reason it says the Wall Street sidewalks is we put money in the CIP back in the day to fund that. And then now we got a STEEP grant. So I'm gonna need some of those monies we funded in CIP to do the engineering. A lot of the engineering was done. I had it done in the scope of work of the Ram Campus Improvements. But we need, uh, shippo had some changes to what was designed due to the historic archaeological dig out there, so we had to make some revisions, so it's gotta get incorporated into a new plan. So I need some of that money to pay the engineer. That can't come out of the grant. Um, but I'm pretty sure there's gonna be a significant amount of money going back into CIP after that's done. I, uh, I'm working with, uh, Luke's Engineering now to get a quote on doing that.
Okay. Uh, I think, again, I can't remember, but, uh, Andy, do, if, if you, if you can or whatever, years ago, when CIP was first established, it was recommended that a certain percentage of the town budget, be put into CIP. We have been woefully low on what we have put in, but can you remember what that was or?
Thankfully, I think Donna has that number. I thought it was something like 3%, but, um, we, we haven't hit that goal.
The goal, the goal that was set years ago was, was that, um, the CIP budget be 5% of the total, of the total budget.
Yeah, so again, we've, we've been far, fortunate enough and lucky enough to be able to work miracles with, you know, the percentage that we've actually operated at. Uh, you know, th- these COVID American Rescue Plan monies would be nice to be able to, you know, provide us with, catch up on some of these, uh, items and issues. You know, and some of these things have been on there for years, like the bridge, uh, and especially now with, you know, more and more, you know, people, you know, adolescents going between the library and AHM and all, that walking bridge would be, I feel, a, a, a safety issue plus, uh, and just a great thing to have, to have them be able to get from the library or from that area of the town over to, uh, the Pendleton Drive AHM area. So, um, glad to see that's in there again. Anybody have any questions, comments? Yeah, Tiffany?
I, I just wanna say that I think, um, I think the list as presented for the use of the American Rescue Plan Funds is, is, is excellent. I think they're all worthy projects and, um, I think we're fortunate that we have another source of funding coming in, um, to kinda help us move and complete some of those projects.
Anyone else? Mark, did you have anything?
Hey, being a safety guy, you, you'd be surprised at the amount of times you, you need a boat, especially in the winter, to have one that's able to go across the water and also on top of the ice, cause we get calls all the time for people stranded out there, falling through the ice, even animals that are out there. So, um, I, I'm, I'm glad whoever brought that up, that, uh, you decided to put that forward, Andy. Cause, um, if you can't respond quickly with the right equipment and that, that, that ends up being a disaster. And Dan, you know, we, we've had some, uh, unfortunate circumstances over the years because of that.
Yeah, been there, done that.
Yes, sir. And, and the skate park, Andy, that, that, uh, that drives everybody crazy that the kids can't go over there and skate and then they go everywhere, where else and drive the business people crazy in their parking lots and they're over at Ram and I'm going down the rails on their skateboard. So, uh, I'm glad we, we found somebody to get that fixed too, Andy.
Are we gonna be able to get some good, decent cameras up on there because, you know, the majority of the kids are great, but there is definitely been a minority that has, have done just massive amounts of damage, not only to the skate park, but to the concession building, the bathrooms. You know, we, we, we've had issues at Veterans Park with vandalism and we need to have equipment that we can identify and then prosecute these individuals. So is there anything in there for doing security at some sort or?
I can check with Craig at Parks and Rec. I know they have some cameras on the, the concession stand, but whether they have anything trained out on the, uh, skate park slash new pickleball court. I don't think so, but that's something we could add in.
Okay. Uh, Mark, what's your thoughts on that?
I'm pretty sure we don't have anything except over by the, uh, the restrooms concession stand. It would be helpful. You know, cameras do, it's very difficult to find out whoever does anything over there. And e- even just knowing who did it, if, if you're not gonna take a huge stand against them, you, you, you gotta be able to talk to kids and talk to their parents and foresee things coming, so you could stop it before it happens. and foresee things coming. So you could stop it before it happens. So I, I'd, I'd be in favor of the cameras. And kids are hanging out over there in the parking lot too. So you know, I'm not an expert on cameras, but they certainly do a good job at Ram with helping us keep things under control, Dan.
Peter?
Mr. Chairman, I just had a couple of things I was thinking about associated with this and and first, Andy, thanks for taking all the time to do this. And it's really helpful to see it and to sort of talk through the rationale. And so I'm, I just, I'm interested in the town's perspective. So I'll direct my question to Andy on how do we garner public input? And I'm not a fan of saying, okay, we're going to have a public, we're going to have a, a town meeting because 25 people show up and it's not really, it's public input, but reality is very few people actually engage when we have the meetings. And so I'm a fan of trying to think about other ways to establish, to, to get public input, if that's what we intend. And so I, I need, I was hoping to get a little more understanding of how you think we can sort of tackle that part of it.
That's a great question, Peter. So one of the things I was anticipating is as this comes out in, in the newspaper, there's going to be an article. We would put something in there to say, you know, whether you like the river or not, it does have a great circulation within our community. And have people reach out to us with submitting letters for possible things that they would want the board, a select and board of finance to consider. And then you guys would weigh in on its merits. So I, I, I think you guys have quick studies. Those projects that I propose don't use up all the money. There's some money left in there for other, other items where we could possibly move some, some items around. Like I said, if that bridge reimbursement at that 500 and some odd thousand dollars doesn't come out of there, there's, you know, half a million dollars going back in. Plus, I believe Donna's going to have to help me. We get two, we're getting, we have one installment of it now. And we're going to get another one before the end of the fiscal year. I think it's 1.4 million, Donna, or is it 18? The first and second installment?
I think they're both 1.4. We have now the other half by, by June 30th.
So there's 2.8 million and I, as you can see, I, I think Mike is 1.4. So I'm looking at this list as half of it. Wanting input and I, I really want to emphasize they didn't, and they still are looking at what can be used. This money can be used for and what it couldn't. I, I had many conversations with the attorney about looking at fire trucks. No, you couldn't do it. It had to be directly related to loss revenues for the municipality. But just two Fridays ago, they came out and said, all right, every municipality has, can use a $10 million loss of revenue due to COVID. So that changed the whole thing. So it wasn't like I was sitting back on this. We didn't get going on this until about a week ago, because we finally got new information from the town attorney, C C M and the actual the feds. So, and we're dealing with the auditors to make sure how to do it and make sure what we're doing is, is the appropriate way to move forward. So I really wanted to do this as a committee of some sort sooner than this, but I, I didn't have, you know, people were asking us, why aren't you getting your, your plans together? I was meeting with other town managers and I think it was not this last Friday, but the Friday before they finally finalized a lot of the stuff with the $10 million distressed municipalities that allowed us to backfill some of these other projects from C I P.
Well, first of all, if I can, if I can continue, I love your pace because I think it's critical that we, we do this slowly and, and thoughtfully. So I think that's great because I, I echo your comments about the fire truck. So, you know, Congressman Courtney comes out, you know, his representative is saying that yes, you can buy a fire truck to the town of Columbia. Okay. Well, last week we couldn't buy a fire truck to your point in. And so, okay, let's, let's, you know, take it nice and slow. So we get all that information out and can make good decisions. And so in terms of the timeline, my recollection was that we don't, we have, we'll have the money. We don't have to spend it in any sort of given timeline. Is that accurate?
Very accurate. And then as you can see, what I'm proposing here is proposed. And I'm now looking to, even with approvals, we wouldn't even look to start spending this till the next fiscal year. So we're not in any rush either.
And I like that. And I'm interested in the other board members input as well, because I also think about it's, it's a unique opportunity that we have. Fortunately, to get back some of our own tax dollars, but that's, I, I don't want to take the worst time of my own distraction with that. But nonetheless, I, I think that there could be other things that we aren't quite aware of that there's, that's come before C I P. Now it's a couple of years down the line. Wouldn't it possibly be nice that we had funds available to kind of continue to address the future needs of the town and not rush and spend it all now. It's a, it's just a thought I had. Again, I'm not saying that's the right thought. I'm just, it's a, I just, it's a thought. So I think that's important. And I thought, and I don't remember the facts, so I need Andy, I need your help again, is I thought we had originally put out some ideas associated with some of the construction projects and were told originally that we couldn't do that with like Martin Road and the bridge and all that. And am I, how am I, I'm not remembering that entirely. I'm not remembering that in detail. Is there anything you can share on that? Cause I thought there was some, we had to pull something back associated with some of those projects and I still see those on here. So I'm just trying to have you refresh my memory as to what happened there.
Yeah. So once again, when they came out with that $10 million distressed municipality forgiveness, that opened the door for a lot of projects where before they weren't eligible because you couldn't show a loss of revenue with those types of projects. But I've gotten legal opinions from other towns. I'm dealing with Columbia. I'm dealing with Coventry. I've gotten opinions from our attorney, C C M. Just to make sure, and I'm dealing with our auditors at the same time. And this is so brand new. We want to make sure what we do, we do right. So like I said, Willa Manic is already, you know, out getting stuff where this is proposed, it's in draft form. Even if it were to get approved, we're not looking to do anything till the next fiscal year. So I think by then we'll have it really hashed out.
And I'm sorry, I just, I don't, I just had one more thing on the timeline. So with there, would it really, is it necessary to correlate the expenditures to the budget? Or do we look at C I P as you normally have prioritized, you know, we do the 900,000 versus the $2 million. And then we use that money, not necessarily correlated to the same time as the budget. Is that an option or is it, it's just not really feasible to sort of think about that outside of the construction of the budget?
No, that's an option. We, if you get it approved, we can wait to spend it or, or, or whatever. It says, you should earmark it, but you, your first statement was correct. You don't have to spend it right away. And I think we should, you know, tread lightly and that's what I've been trying to do. I know people are like, where's this list? Where's this list? And, you know, we were daily, I was talking to the attorneys and, and he'd give an opinion one day and then the next day, new regulations would come down from the feds that would change that. So there's, there's a lot of stuff going on and we're trying to stay on top, but I think we've got a handle on it. Not to jump off this topic, but I know it's near and dear to everybody's heart and Hebron. I just got an announcement today that the clean water funds just came out with a whole bunch of money. So the first thing I did was picked up the phone. Got to hold the Patrick, the town planner, got to hold the Connecticut water. We have a plan. We want to connect the two water systems together to get more water in the center of town. So we're going to be applying for that immediately. So it's, it's all these buckets of money are starting to loosen up. And we just got that announcement at like one o'clock today and two o'clock I was setting up meetings to start. I even let Father Ron know. So he's ecstatic.
That was, that was one of the things I was going to suggest. First off, doing it the way we're doing it, Pete. Or if we were to not do it in this, in this methodology, but if you were to do it as individual items, I don't know if we would have to come back before the voters on each individual item saying, we want to spend X, Y, Z of, you know, this money on a, you know, left-handed widget or whatever. Doing it this way, it's all out there. Everybody can see it. They can see the funding source and I like the idea of holding half of it back. And I was thinking of again, you know, future infrastructure needs. You know, as, as, you know, we build out things or what have you. You know, we may need extra funds for again, whatever. And one of the things I was thinking in the back of my head, and I actually talked to Andy, you know, a few weeks ago was, you know, possibly for the water system for, you know, even connecting Hebron L to the water system or, you know, whatever, and/or what would be needed, you know, for additional wells to support the, you know, those systems. So I, I personally, right now I'm in favor of, of moving, you know, conceivably forward with what Andy's kind of put forward here, you know, with maybe more discussion and all, but at least following this venue.
So Dan, you had mentioned, I'm sorry, you had mentioned the, you know, having to go before the public, before the left, you know, in your.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Okay. So that, that's my question. What, what's our, I mean, I, I am clearly a fan of public input, but what is our obligation? Is that outlined in terms of if we did wait and said, all of a sudden now you want to spend a hundred thousand? Do we, do we need public approval to do that or input? Or that's really a courtesy for the public? So we're transparent. Do we have to go before the public on this? I'm just trying to think of different, you know, I don't want to tie your hands if we're sort of doing this, if we end up doing this in a staged process. What is a requirement of, of us in the intersection with public approval of formal or informal?
Yeah. So how I operate is I watch what the other towns do and the other towns have brought it in front of the public for a vote, whether it be a town meeting. Be a list of approved projects with the amounts. So I was looking to follow suit, maybe not so much like you said, as a town meeting, but if we put it into the budget and it gets voted on, even if it's a separate question, and at the referendum, a separate question at the referendum, then you have everybody's input that weighed in on it. But I was looking just to be, just for transparency alone, I'm pretty sure you have to do it, but just for transparency, I would, I would think you guys would want to do it. I would want, I would recommend that you do it that way.
Right. So I think we should spend some time thinking about how best then we can solicit the input of the public to understand where they lean in terms of their interests. Because it is really all public. It's all, it's public money. I mean, it's everyone in town is entitled to an opinion on how we spend in effect their money. And, but how do we do it in a way that gets the broadest input? But doesn't then tie your hands if you want to do it in a step manner. So I, I, again, not for tonight, but I think that's something that we should maybe put on as old business relative to how do we solicit public input in support of this? To maintain that transparency that Andy talks about and think of how we can get the most input that we can without again, having to go back to them every time we want to, you know, maybe want to spend $10,000 on something. So maybe we can continue to discuss it at a, at another meeting.
Absolutely.
But right now I think that having the list at a referendum gets the most people. You get those folks who come and vote. Whereas at a town meeting, you get 25, maybe we make enough phone calls, we get 30. And how many of those people are us? So I think you get much more input from having some, a list of the projects at the referendum. Even though we don't get a high turnout at a referendum, we get, certainly get more than we get out of town meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Perfect. Any further discussion on this topic? Okay. Hearing none. I believe we are down to the draft agenda for our February 17th, 2022 meeting. So again, we're going to, well, do we want to keep on the C I P? Get that on the, or is this on here?
Yes.
I'm going to grab page one of the two. Okay. Okay. Well, again, as, as we do every time, if you have anything to add or, or whatever, please get it in to Andy and Donna, so that it can get put on there. Our next order of business is our consent agenda. Or is there any other new business before I go to there? Cause I've forgotten that in past weeks. Okay. Hearing none. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may or may not need to discuss individually and may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. And we have the items of the approval of the January 6th, 2022 regular meeting. The January 20th, 2022 regular meeting. And then the tax refunds as listed. So does anybody want any of those items broken out individually?
Mr. Chair, I have an addition I'd like to request on the January 20th minutes.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Oh, you want me to say that now? Okay. Um, so I'm looking at, what number is it? Bear with me. Have my hand out here. Under 8C, under the Hammer Softball Field Project update. Um, I just, I think it's important to reflect that myself and Selectman Rivera also spoke in favor of this project. And I, I think brevity is the soul of wit. But I just, that was something I had requested and I know Selectman Rivera had also spoken in favor of it. So if we could just kind of add both of our names in there, I would greatly appreciate it if that would be possible.
Okay.
Peter did too. Peter, is he speaking in favor of the Hammer Project too?
Yeah, I love, I love the Hammer Project. Absolutely. We, we were all over it. So sure, absolutely.
I think we should throw a little more money into it.
Yeah.
If we're going to have a pickleball court, I'm not even sure what that is.
It's a great sport.
Invest some money in something that I understand what it is.
All right. Pickleball within the next three years will be a high school sport.
Okay.
That's the projection. It's going to be a high school sport. So it's a, it's a short version of tennis, but it's, it's a ball. It's really a, a fun sport. I feel like it's in that family. But it's, it's, it's anticipated to be actually a high school sport coming up very shortly. So.
Okay, Pete, thanks.
Okay. So we'll break it up and then we'll do the, the, that was Jerry 20th one, correct?
Correct.
Yes. So we'll make a motion to approve the January 6th, 2022 regular meeting. All in favor, sign up by signify by saying aye. Going to talking school. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. And then make a motion to approve the January 20th, 2022 regular meeting as amended with the names added of those in favor of the H A M R softball who spoke positively on it. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Myself, aye. And then the tax refunds as listed that we make a motion to approve the tax refunds as, as presented. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. Our liaison reports. Andy? Anything to report?
No, I know they, you know, the weather's kind of slowed down some of the progress, but they're out there working on the pump stations. I, I can send that out to the selectmen tomorrow in an email. I was waiting to get that to staff to them, but I don't believe it came in for an update on that. But, um, and then as you know, I, I, the fire chief came in and surprised me and said the meeting was the next night regarding the corporations issue. So we needed to get a letter out to that for that night, but that's, that's open ended and we're looking to bring you in on that, Dan. And just working with that building committee with all these projects and working with the schools and the budgets kind of consuming most of our time now.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Gail?
Okay. Um, the Hebron Board of Ed is meeting tonight at a special meeting to discuss their budget. So I have nothing else to add there. The Commission on, Commission of Aging Senior Center at the last meeting, a couple of weeks ago. So I have nothing else to add there. The Commission on, Commission of Aging Senior Center at the last meeting a couple of weeks ago. A new chair of the board was, um, elected, Tanya Mara. And the AARP Tax Clinics are starting on February 8th. And they'll be offered until March 29th. The hours are Tuesdays from nine to one. And anyone who would like to use that service should call the senior center to get and to make an appointment. Douglas Library, they're continuing to have the Friday movies and this week will be being the Riccardos. And next week, February 8th, is going to be a teen video game tournament, um, at 2:30 after the youngsters are out of school. And the new locker system, which was paid for with, uh, grants money is going to be actuated. It allows you, if you have items on hold, to have them put into a locker and you will get a code. And at any time you can go up and get your items out of it. So you don't need to have the library open. And that's it, Dan.
Thank you. Tiffany?
Okay. So, um, for the Economic Development Commission, um, they're releasing their annual business survey through their economic development coordinator this month. Um, in addition, they formally kicked off their marketing and branding study with a consultant and that project will run through the end of the year. And the goal of that is to identify ways to, um, attract and retain businesses to Hebron. Um, so with, with, yeah, which is really interesting. So, um, with the Green Committee, um, you know, they're stretched pretty thin. Because I understand that they're looking for, um, members to join them. They, um, they're, they're looking to fulfill some projects with money they just received in the Lee Sawyer Recycling Grant. And so that will include launching the Swap Shack on Earth Day on April 23rd, um, and upgrading some other items in town. Um, so they will also be updating, um, and moving forward with a townwide climate action plan. Um, so it's going to be a big undertaking for them. So they're looking to focus most of their time in the second half of the year on this as well. Um, and then Open Space met last night. Something that I think would be of interest for everyone to know is that, um, the state is accepting. Public comment on the Graville Trail Network and the Sammer River State Forest. The meetings were today, unfortunately, um, but they're still accepting public comments through February 17th. If people are interested and want to weigh in, they can do so through the state. Um, and we were also last night discussing, um, presentation we're getting ready to make to. The Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance for the appropriation. Um, and that's what I have.
Okay. A quick question. I believe on Earth Day, uh, Green Committee does a, uh, community cleanup. Are they still planning on doing that this year?
Um, I'm not sure. I can ask and follow up and have a report for you in, uh, in a couple of weeks. Um, so let me follow up on that for you.
Perfect. Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Peter, or Mark rather. Mark? Mark?
Ran first, Dan. The superintendent search has been narrowed down to the three finalists. And they're going to bring them in for interviews. They're working hard on the budget. Uh, just had a meeting with Superintendent Leslie and I think everybody's going to be really pleased with his budget. Uh, AHM. I gotta make a very positive comment about AHM. Everybody's pretty familiar with the Juvenile Review Board. And during these times of COVID with the court systems being, uh, not as receptive, we've had a lot more cases at JR B. In fact, um, I rejoined because there's so many cases. So I went back on the JR B. And the function that AHM serves and giving kids a second chance when, when they make a mistake is just phenomenal. It's such a successful program. Even just a quick personal note, I think about six weeks ago I had, um, it's technically referred a kid for smoking weed. And I saw him, uh, last week and he comes up to me and he said, thank you for giving me that break. I've been clean since. I'm doing some community service and, um, you know, it seems like a small thing to us as adults sometimes is a big thing to families and young people. It kind of, that made me feel worthwhile in, uh, the things that we do sometimes. So that concludes what I have to say.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Peter?
Yeah. First of all, Mark, anything that you do to improve the life of a child is, uh, is awesome. So thank you for that. All right. So Parks and Rec, um, uh, spent a little bit of time talking about the, uh, you know, excuse me while I return my notes here. Green Garden Gang and the Pollinator Pathway and looking for support of the, um, National Pollinator Week, uh, in the end of June. Dialogue around that. Was an update on the, on the programs, only lost one out of 45 games for, uh, the COVID, uh, related, uh, cancellation. So the basketball program is going well. A little bit of dialogue on the prep and potentially losing the space. Or having to move the space to, with the needs of the school. So there was some concern and dialogue around that. That's just an ongoing discussion. Farmers market going forward. So two Saturdays a month starting in June. Uh, so there's going to be some changes to that format, but that's moving forward. So that's good news. Hebron Day, uh, being finalized, um, looking to move it. I don't know. I think it's going to happen this year. Move it to the end of June versus the end of August to hopefully get better participation. Some budget discussion, um, you know, nothing that we have, we have already covered some of that since the capital items they were talking about. Uh, and the Hammer update, Maple Fest, uh, there was some energy around that. That's back on. Uh, and they're still opining for, uh, commission members. So, uh, let's keep putting the word out there. The Parks and Rec Commission needs, uh, there's some openings there. So, um, maybe we do support that or spread the word would be great. Um, also the Board of Finance, uh, meeting on the 27th. Finance Director's Report continued to make great progress on the audit. Um, and that's been fine. Lots of good work being done there to address some of the earlier findings. So we talked about that before. So that seems to be going, uh, well, um, uh, there also was dialogue, knowing that it has to come through the board as a selectman. And Andy's updated on the American Rescue Funds, but there was some discussion and update on that. So, uh, that was, uh, interesting. But, you know, similar sort of, uh, structure there of, of spending some time talking about that. See anything else we haven't talked about? Discussion of the Special Ed Access Cost Grant, liaison reports. And so, no, that's, uh, that's about, uh, that's about it, Dan. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I have nothing on Hebron Historic Properties. Uh, I do have the fire department. Basically the big thing right now is they're working at rebranding the corporation. And that's something that is literally just initially started. Uh, so it'll be interesting to see where that all goes. So more information on that to follow. And that's all I have. Do we have any, well, I know we have, uh, public comment. And then after public comment, uh, we're going to have an anticipated executive session. Is that correct?
Yes, I will make, uh, a move that we go into executive session after we finish up with public comments.
Okay. So with that, uh, is there any public comment, Donna?
Yes. Mel Lecter has a public comment.
One quick thing to add to the HM report is that they have scheduled a, uh, auction and concert for, I believe it's April 23rd. It will be, uh, a smaller group of people present, but they're also going to do some, uh, live streaming of it. Cost will still come out and, you know, it will come out in a very short period of time. But, uh, I know many of the Selectmen do attend and this is something, it's typically in the fall. But, uh, you're going to try to kick it off, kick it off in April, uh, simply to, to get back into the swing of things. Thank you.
Okay. The only thing I would like to say, and I'll do it under public comment, is that we have a, uh, town meeting. I want to say February 10th, uh, seven o'clock at the, uh, library. So that is on the acceptance of a couple of grants. Uh, the first grant would be for the, um, Old Colchester Road, uh, Bridge Repair. And the second would be for the library roof, uh, project. Andy, did you want to, uh, say anything else on that?
No, I just, we're going to do it in person. We tried to look at other options and they were just too, uh, too difficult at the time with the equipment that we have. So, uh, we felt this is the best way to move forward and the, um, the exposure rates are down below seven. So I think it'll, hopefully everybody wears a mask. Participate in social distancing. We should be all, all set, crush your fingers.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else? Be like an auctioneer going once, going twice. Sold. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Uh, Gail?
It is 8:21. We should move into executive session at this time. Um, I would like to, I, we need to invite in Donna for her expertise with the technical aspects. And, um, I don't think we need anyone else at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Have a great evening. Have a safe week.